Hands look here, and he suggests that we hold this at second reading. And he's gonna talk about this because he thinks that some work needs to be done into this, and he made a suggestion about the MOP board, which is the tax review board. And so, Tom would like to speak on this?
Yep, and we're talking about twenty-nine, correct?
Twenty-eight.
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 Yeah, twenty-
No, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I think, as you indicated, that you've had some discussions with Joe DeMert and that there's an issue of whether or not there's a qualification.
Yes.
And I think that that needs to be addressed, so let's put that on second reading. And that ties into then twenty-nine, which is, you know, we're the painters and you have to direct us as to what color you want to paint the room. And certainly, there's different rooms that you would want different colors in it, and you should also dictate that, but we guide you in that. One of the suggestions that the mayor had last week when we were talking about this is to use the expertise and the communicative skills of the finance committee of council. And then, as you and I were talking today, I thought one good thing as well, since that board, the income tax review board, basically, for lack of a better term, polices the MOP, does on an annual basis, sends out the forms, reviews those forms, they also act as the appellate board for individuals who might be denied, is to, if there's a need to address and amend this ordinance so that it meets your needs, so that, as Mr. Engel said, you know, two weeks ago, discretion, whether it's more discretion, less discretion, whether or not there's an immediate review of each and every application, so it's just not one or two people reviewing it, all those can be built into the order. The whole point being, it's gonna take a lot of time to do, and we need your input first. Let's do it that way, and then we'll work with you to get exactly the document that you need in order to carry on with MOPs. It's a very important issue, as you call it.
Right, okay, and so, like, the finance, so you want the finance committee to kinda like get together with the MOP, and then all of us get together, so we would need a work session for that?
Right.
So Sylvia, you'll have to find out what your schedule is to see how you want to handle that, and then maybe get with Joseph to even see, send out an email, see if we can- the sooner I would like to get this, like, third reading, hopefully, next council meeting.
We'll see what we can do here.
Right, so, does everybody, would everybody, would you like to do, what about you, Jan?
Yeah, I'd like to have it done, I would like this whole week.
Okay, Dave?
I'd like to get it done too, but Jan's got a point, this is very important.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about that one.
If we're running half of-
Can't do it.
Right, okay, yeah, you're gonna be gone, okay.
Well, plus Thursday's a little, Friday's a little, Friday's beginning of the castle, so.
That's a very good-
It's that week.
If-
Everybody's at families.
Unless you wanna do-
I can't do it.
The, no, right above the seven.
That's a two step.
Which would be, that's a two step before the council meeting, so at least we'd have some dialogue on it. I think it's only fair for Mr. Blackburn that we have that to handle.
Well, I think we-
Unfortunately, a house that comes to-
Right.
I can indicate to you that the first ordinance, the twenty-eighth ordinance, is a different issue. In the event that twenty-nine and an amendment is created that fits your needs with regards to the MOP, and that's more strict, more stringent than what it is now, that wouldn't affect twenty-eight, because, you know, you can't go back, make it stricter to an individual who's already applied for something. I think the only question there is whether or not the applicant is eligible.
Yeah.
So that's a simple issue. We'll get to that real quick.
I think that's a straightforward issue. And there's also a further question about-
Are we able to talk about eligibility?
Of course we can, Sylvia, but here's what I'm gonna suggest. We wanna meet on, I can meet on the, during that week in April.
Let's get this-
I can meet on, will you be back?
Be back on the seventh.
Okay, you'll be back on the seventh?
No, I'm back on the seventh.
Yes, so, I-
Ask him if I can back, but-
I can meet on, I can meet on Wednesday?
There's a charter review.
Has there been charter review? Well, then, you know, that's-
So we just meet before the council meeting?
We could do that.
Do you wanna work on the ninth?
We're ever gonna get work out there?
Yeah, that's true.
Here's what I'm gonna suggest.
What I wanted, I wanna pick one up, like, if we're gonna have a work session, I'd pick someone, a lot of parties to meet up, because it's, whatever our ideas are, they have to be made to work again.
Okay.
A lot of part, and so, I think a lot of parties-
Well, I think we, then, what we're talking about is, based on the schedule constraints here, this is a pretty happy week, we're talking about the following week, so-
You go thirteenth?
Yeah. And if I'm reading it across now, we're on Monday, Monday's the eleventh, Tuesday's the twelfth, and does anybody else-
Maybe we're making wrong month.
Okay, all right.
Sixteenth, Thursday. Sixteenth, Thursday?
Yeah, we have April.
April's to your right and May's to your left.
Yeah, I know, but we're, right now, we're in March, we would be, we're gonna be in April on Wednesday, so next week.
No, I was just looking, I wrote mine down.
Okay, so, we're talking the, Monday, the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, that range?
Yeah.
Okay, who can be, are there any constraints on those days by any council member?
Charter review is on the fifteenth.
Okay, so, we need to not do it on the fifteenth?
It's ten.
And that, yes, and the fourteenth is the day before taxes, but I'm gonna file mine on Monday, so.
Sixteenth, Thursday?
Yep.
Okay.
We're trying to keep Thursdays.
All right, all right, we can do April sixteenth.
April, what, what time, about six-thirty?
Six-thirty's fine.
And we'll address the eligibility way in advance of that.
Okay, thanks, Tom, that would help. Okay, then, so now, so, so do you, Tom, you had suggested ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand fifteen, be tabled, do you still suggest that?
Yep.
Okay.
Why do you want a table?
I, he suggested it.
You want a table twenty-eight or a table the second?
Table twenty-nine.
He wanted the table, ordinance number twenty-nine.
It's gonna be a lot of work to tailor-
The twenty-eight is second.
Yes.
Yes.
Table twenty-nine.
Correct. And we'll address eligibility, you know.
Okay, Sylvia, that will be yours as well, ordinance number twenty-nine, and Sylvia, you're on resolution number thirty-six, two thousand fifteen?
Yeah.
Which is a resolution approving the mayor's approval of Scott.
Right, Sylvia, this, as I indicated last time, the results of the investigation that's ongoing would be the timing in which we'd wanna consider this, so I think we just hold it at first reading while we say everything.
I don't have a problem with that. How's everybody else going?
When are you gonna get the results?
Well, I've talked to the investigator today, and he said they're proceeding on schedule, and I'm expecting the results to be available sometime in the third week of April, so.
Ordinance number thirty-eight, two thousand fifteen, Sylvia, that is also yours, an emergency ordinance authorizing the ban to revised records policy.
Right, and that's just a section of the records policy that exists, I haven't changed anything other than the applicability to council, and I think we've got a, you know, there's a draft out there, we're gonna do that at second reading tonight, is I understand?
Yes.
And if everybody's had a chance to look at that, it's simply saying that council have access to all records that are needed for the purposes of performing their duties, so, it's, this issue of waiting and deciding and reviewing through the law department that is part of the structure that we're doing now, I think, is cumbersome, and there's no reason why, as a partnership team inside the city government, that we should be waiting and waiting for a law review at least.
Well, I'll tell you why. The mayor's addressed the concerns that came up, I think, through Rita, and that was that they wanted to, the goal was to avoid the procedures of the Public Records Act, that it was the goal to not mandate that members of council use the Public Records Act to obtain the city's records. The mayor adopted a policy that does have some controls in it and some procedures in it, and you need that, otherwise-
Well, I'm not arguing you don't, I'm saying-
Okay. These are not your records, there's a separation of powers between legislative and administrative, there's a separation of confidentiality between the records that you can get, you don't know what records are available to you, not all of these records are available to you just because you're on council, that's incorrect. I can name one group of records immediately, which would be tax record, another group of records would be confidential medical information that's contained in the employee's files, social security numbers, marital status, lawsuits involving employees, and other very important information, which is not a public record. And just because you might, in your thought process, or somebody else's thought process, two years, four years, five years, six from years from now, think that they have the ability to, as a, as a member of council, to get into somebody's medical records, to get into somebody's income tax records, that doesn't make it your job, that doesn't-
Right, but nobody's asked for those kind of records, Tom.
Not yet, but I'm telling you that under this amendment here, that could happen, very well happen.
Let me point out-
So there has to be some sort of control.
You don't want some of the public records.
Let me point out to you that I, that it's-
I'm just giving you my opinion.
All right, I understand, and that's an opinion, what I'm saying to you is this, there is a specific redaction sentence in there that says, you can, is that all personal information can be redacted? Now, for example, when I asked for records of this information when I was a citizen concerning who was receiving the healthcare benefits, it was on council. The information, personal information was redacted, I asked for the form, selection form or the election form, and they redacted personal information out of there, but it still was clear that is-
I understand, social security numbers we could remove, we could remove easily, you can't remove somebody's description of an operation, you can't remove some, somebody's file, their wife's description of an operation, or the healthcare coverage that they're taking, you can't remove anything from an income tax return, because all of it is confidential, all of it is confidential.
Well, let's put it this way, we're talking about records that we would normally have access to here, I think that there are concerns you're expressing that are not, are not an issue here, we're not talking about personal records.
Yet.
Can I ask one more question?
And if we want to-
Cut to the chase here.
I know.
Cut to the chase here, there is a state law that talks about public records.
Right, and we all attend to that, we all aspire to attend to-
Are we writing along to the state law and the policies that exist? What is wrong today that you, Ms. Hanekin, need to write an amendment to, or a policy to what already exists? What, tell me what's wrong, 'cause I'm having a hard time understanding what's wrong with the state law and what's wrong with that policy.
Well, I've heard nothing about the state law, the state law is in place.
State law takes priority.
Well, the court law's great, though.
I'll give you an example, let me just give you a real fast example. I verbally asked for public records request, okay, and then I was told in writing by the administration here that they didn't give me it because I didn't put it in writing. State law says I don't have to, I can verbally, I can be anonymous, I can, I don't have to put anything in writing.
Rita, that's because you made a mistake there, I think, with all due respect.
No, that's because the mayor posted this right here last week sometime, that's why they said, some new thing-
That's not a public record, it's a policy, and you didn't, you didn't, you're getting mixed up with what the state law says and with what the policy says.
It's his policy.
If you're going under state law, then you're gonna pay for it.
Tom, as our, Tom, as our council attorney-
Yep.
Are you giving us this advice, because the mayor wants this, I'm saying, we-
No, 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 Scott, not to do with the mayor.
Okay, let me say this.
I'm trying to protect-
Well, I understand, if you have a concern about specific records being exempted, then I want you to send me an email on that, and we can amend based on that, but the general set of records, as you know, your bills, your detailed bills, all of those that were sources of conflict, and it's taken me two weeks to get the copies of your latest-
None of them are my bills, I don't work for the city, I'm not an employee in the city-
All right, now, wait a minute, wait a minute.
They're not my bills, I know exactly what you mean, I-
I'm, I'm just pointing out to you, that in the normal course of-
There's a good question, it's, what's wrong with the mayor's policy?
What's wrong?
He's providing you what he thought you all wanted.
Well, let's put it this way.
Are you not getting what you want in one hour, or what is wrong that the policy-
I am saying that-
No, you're not answering the question. What is wrong with the policy today that you had to go off and write another one? What is wrong with it?
Jan, may I speak for you?
Yeah, could you answer the question?
I, you know what, I'm trying to answer the question.
No, you alluded to the-
Well, Jan, you know, are you gonna say something, Rita? Because, you know what?
Sylvia, she's asking to ask a question, that's all she asked you.
Well, I know that, but she keeps badgering me.
Jan, let her answer your question.
Right, you know, it's, here's the bottom line, we have information that should be available to us, we do not need to have a public records request, we are council. That means that council, in the normal course of business, should be able to have access to regular records, I'm not asking for personal-
And I agree, and I think the mayor agrees with you, and that's why he created that policy.
The mayor is, is running every bit of these public records through the attorney's office, right?
Public records requests, yes.
Yes, but we are asking for-
He created a policy to circumvent that situation.
Well, I do not agree that that is sufficient for what we're trying to do, which is getting timely answers, I'm not saying it has to be in two hours, I'm saying, within a couple of days, in most circumstances, we should be able to get access to information needed as we're going along, and re, like, for instance, I've been trying to review the expenditures by the DeMert Law Firm on a regular basis, and I wanted to review them-
I understand what the whole purpose of the, of the thing is.
Well, but, no, no, it's gotta-
You let me know what records you want, we'll get them to you, maybe this is a good reason to go ahead and hire the public records clerk, so we don't take these people away from their jobs in order to fill these requests.
Well, it is their job to provide us information, sir, remember that.
Well, it's all their job to do their job, too.
They're doing their job, and there's no reason why we can't-
There's plenty of reasons.
Yeah, Dave, did you have something to say about this, too?
No, I'm just, everybody's talking, and Sylvia's not allowed to give an answer, so I've just gotta, and, just sitting here, everybody just wants to argue, nobody wants to, with Sylvia, so.
What were you gonna say, Jan?
Maybe we need to have a, what session?
I would like to see, I know, a statement, we've all been through this, right, like, see what the city policy is again, and what the city one is, I still don't have an answer of why this is so hot, other than I should be able to ask, but I probably will not get it immediately.
Well, you guys get the records when you want them, but when we ask for them, it's a, it's a project.
I don't wanna ask for any public records requests.
Yeah, she has her main.
Well-
Just don't make this personal, I don't wanna ask for any, I'm saying, what, can we, we need to table this until we can look at the policy that's there today.
Well, no, I think we did hold it at second, I mean, on second reading.
This policy that's here, this needs more work to ensure that we are non-relational law.
And we're gonna go to third reading, but like Dave said, we have to have a work session on, on, I don't know, records policy, we'll have a work session on that.
Well, that's correct, I don't have a problem, I have no problem.
Yes, and the mayor wants to speak now, though.
Also, I'm gonna say, there's twenty-seven records requests, and I can-
And how many did I make?
None.
Thank you.
How many did I make? None.
Well, how many did I make?
I'm trying to count, wait, I have to make sure. None.
My request is, head on, chair, president, whatever you may call it.
President?
Is that we have the state law, we have the current policy, and then we have this proposed policy, identify what the differences are, 'cause I'm not gonna see any, you talk about, we call it SSI, and I just went through class number four thousand thirty-two, the AT&T, about social security things, we are not allowed to talk about.
Right, well, we all know what all of those are, when we go to the court.
Could we have that for a work session, and then just hold this at first? There's no reason to move on to it until we have the discussion.
Right, but we could go to second, it's not gonna hurt anything to go to second.
Why can't we hold it at first, like we're dealing with the number twenty-eight?
Sylvia, what do you wanna do, second reading, or you wanna hold it at first, it's your, it's your ordinance?
I, yes, well, the first place, it's not emergency, we can hold it at first.
Okay.
In the second place, the, the fact is that, as regular council, we have a lot of duties that require us to review items, to understand what's happening, and we need access within reasonable time, not within immediate, as some are saying, but within days. For example, when I was preparing for the meeting that we had on March nineteenth, I had asked for the bills, because I was trying to look at all the expenditure levels inside of the expenditure report that we received, and I, I wasn't able to get all those, and I think that it's a relatively simple thing to do, and we are not being unreasonable, I have not asked for unreasonable numbers of records, and I've only asked for records that I need for working on activity. So, whatever the concern is, there, there shouldn't be any concern about council having access to these records, as long as it's not personal information. And if you have a set of objections to personal records, we're happy to include that, or exclude that as something we're gonna have access to on this special council. So I don't see a problem with that, and as, as council, basically, the city government and legislators operates under the policy that council can establish, not simply the mayor, or not simply state law, so I'm just saying, let's look at this, I have had a number of experiences where I wanna see something timely and I don't get it, so that's the bottom line, so we'll do that, and I know that-
It's, it's easy to say that, but I don't think that that's correct.
Well, I think that you're incorrect.
You know, and the only thing that you've answered so far is that you're talking about the DeMert bills, the DeMert bills, if that's all you want, and you're changing an entire policy-
I gave an example, sir.
-and an ordinance in a state law, because of the DeMert bills, why don't you just ask for it?
All right.
No, we're not gonna even go with it right now.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, that's ordinance number thirty-nine, Jan, could you please take that, please, it's an ordinance approving annuity and the inclusion of certain ordinances, okay? That's normal to do, okay?
House Speaker.
House Speaker. Okay, so, we're gonna take that to first, second, third reading, everybody okay?
Yep.
All right, ordinance number forty, is the current appropriations of one sixteen, two thousand fourteen, to appropriate funds for full-time human resource personnel administration. Don, can you talk about this, I mean, this was a part-time job, is this, is Betsy wanting to stay, if it goes full-time, or what is this about?
Well, Betsy's got a great job, she's going to, and with the county, housing, and the problem is that the, there's a lot of things that happened and are happening now that didn't happen before. In two thousand nine, when we had to cut ten percent off the top, the HR job was made part-time.
Okay.
And it's the same since then, so if we move it up to full-time, it really is a full-time job, especially now that we're, we're having all these things going on, for instance, Obamacare, union negotiations, all of that is coming up in the future. I'm interviewing people right now for the part-time position, all right, but sooner or later, that should go back to what it was in two thousand nine preceding, you know, we talk about filling in safety positions, the HR department is right now working on safety processes and procedures that we do not have in place increasing our liability. So, by having someone that can do more and be paid for, then we will take care of possible liability later.
Right, Don, my only, my only suggestion on our human resources, most cities and most businesses, but human resource, but like, like, for example, which is used as public records deal, human resource, all public records would go through human resource, and they know the laws, the state laws, and they know how to react to certain things that are not, and that's the way it should be, and that's what I've been calling around in a lot of cities, in almost all the cities, it all goes through human resource, certain things that they're not sure of only goes to the law department, but most of the time, when a public records request comes in, it goes through human resource, and then the human resource will send it to that department, that department will pull the records, and then the human resource is responsible for taking out anything that is not public record, and then it is given to the, the applicant or whoever has requested the public records.
Which company does that?
Almost all the cities do, call them, oh, yes, they do, I've been calling all the cities, all around, so I've been doing it for three years now.
Who do you call?
Every one of them, Jan, you can call them yourself.
Give me one or two, because-
You could call Twinsburg, you can-
In the public, we don't get that word.
You can call anywhere, Jan, and they, they, every city does it, and that would just be my only, 'cause we really don't need to be sending public records requests to the law department, because it's, it's common sense, though, okay? If it doesn't have a social security number in it, if it doesn't have medical in it, and it doesn't have an address on it, it should be released, if it's, if it's able to.
What about a juvenile rape record?
No, you can't do that.
Are you sure?
I, I don't think so.
Are you sure?
I don't think juvenile stuff, and the police, some certain police stuff is not-
Are you sure?
It's a very difficult situation. Human resources people are involved with the-
I thought we were gonna move on.
FMLA, payroll, benefits.
If I may, we have to have someone assigned to record retention, that person is Diana, all right, she not only takes care of records requests, but she's also in charge of disposing of records, keeping track of records, so she's got a bundle of work to do. One of the things we're talking about tonight is some help in making human resources full-time so that we can better service not only our residents, our, our employees, but also take care of business so that the city doesn't get sued, or the city doesn't find itself in liability.
Don, let me ask you a couple questions financially on this, what is the salary that would be offered for the full-time?
The salary is still a salary classification that's listed, so if you go to what our salaries are, the, the classification is there, all we would do is use that classification.
Well, then, that's what I'm asking you, since I don't have it in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me, but-
Sylvia, we're gonna hold this at first, so.
Okay.
Not, okay, 'cause we're in the half-
I'm asking you a question.
It's a nine?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna hold it at first, though?
Yeah, we will.
You didn't even answer.
Dave, you wanna take that one?
Sure.
Okay, ordinance number forty, one, oh, yes, go on.
Don, you said you're, you're interviewing for a part-time position, and I understand, but if we're gonna make this into a full-time position, it seems like we have the cart in front of the horse, or are you planning on telling these people it may become a full-time position?
Yes.
Are you interviewing this?
That would be nice to say that, because some of them are really looking for full-time, but they'll take something part-time, so then you get somebody, they know the whole system, they learn, and they lead to go to a full-time job, so it is a benefit having that, and I think that HR director is a little, a little more different than most, because an HR person can go from mayor to mayor to mayor because of their experience, unlike some of the other positions where they're at will, and they might not be with the experience, but HR-
What do you mean? Is this a civil service position? I don't understand what you're saying.
He's just, he's saying that it's, it's a professional job without a major political component like that.
In other words, it doesn't have to be political.
And I agree with that, well, let me ask one other thing, then, they would also have health care coverage, correct, in the, in this scenario?
Yes.
So that would be whatever X amount more.
Okay, okay.
All right, just, and I will look that up and make sure we have it in the end.
Okay, yeah, so, I mean, it's at first reading, I know.
Everybody I've interviewed so far has been a lawyer that has a husband that's working, so it might not be-
Yeah, they may decline and maybe see the finger or something, that's true, I, I just wanna see what our, okay.
First reading.
Okay, first reading.
I have a question, this person's gonna go on the mayor's office, right, according to Diana, or with the records clerk, or the HR clerk?
Not that the records clerk.
It says in the mayor's office, the records clerk, would they be reporting to Diana, or would they be reporting to, you were talking so much, I couldn't hear.
The public records clerk is an embellishment, actually, I would like it to say clerk, period.
It would be with the, with Diana? And it would be with the, with Diane?
Well, the clerk would move, float wherever we need it, and that happens in not only the mayor's office upstairs, uh, records requests, but also on police, for instance, you get a lot of records requests, and if they get buried down there, that person goes there. This is just a floater, basically, to help out wherever's needed.
But their floating structure would be to Diane, or gain their...
Diana... It's an activity, Jan, it's an activity, they're, uh, receives direct supervision from the administrative executive.
I was reading one in italics.
And that's ordinance forty-one, two thousand fifteen, which Nick, Nick, uh, Dave's doing forty, and Nick is gonna do ordinance number forty-one, which is the part-time, we're gonna hold this at first, the part-time position for public records clerk. Resolution number forty-two, Jan, could you please take that, that's appointing Al Kalish to the income tax review board in order to fill a recent vacancy.
Sure.
And then, um, we can do three readings on that, okay, Jan, is that all right? Um, and then I'll take resolution number forty-three, uh, resolution asking the governor to reconsider his proposed allocations of school funding plan, uh, is everybody comfortable with three readings?
Yeah.
All right, and, uh, this motion, um, this is, uh, Josephine, uh, Sylvia, if you